I'd like to welcome everybody to the Delaware County Commissioners Meeting. It's April 19, 2021. The time is 9:02. If everybody could please stand for the pledge.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Here.
Ms. Reagan.
Present.
Mr. King.
Here.
Mr. Brooke.
Here.
Next, we have for appointments, City and County Council for people disability board. I believe we found out we do have one more appointment, so if anyone is interested in that, can you please email our office at commissioners@county.delaware.in.us? And also, if you have any questions or comments for today's meeting, also email that to that email address. Next, we'll move to approval of minutes, April 5, 2021, Commissioners Meeting.
So move.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll move to contracts or agreements for approval. We have our emergency declaration 2020-09. Mr. Brooke?
Yes, Commissioners. I drafted the most recent emergency declaration because the county still has a number of COVID infections, and we haven't had a COVID death for a while, but that's, and that's a good thing. We did increase about 10 new cases. The county moved down to the blue category for the state. It's still not out. We still have a positivity rate of 4%, and the state is still in their emergency mandate till the end of the month. So I took the declaration from last time and just extended it to your next meeting, which is May 3, I believe. Yep, May 3.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
No.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll move on to Delaware County Community Corrections. Ms. Miranda?
Good morning, Jane Miranda, Community Corrections. I am here for the lease that Mr. Brooke drafted for the new space out at 3100 South Telleton. My board has approved it, so we just need to finalize the lease for that.
Pleasure, the Commission.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes.
Do you want me just to sign it and then leave it over for you guys to sign?
That's fine.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next, we have inner local agreement with Yorktown for a paving project.
This is the inner local. Go ahead, Angie. I just drafted it, so.
Okay. Troy wasn't able to make it to the meeting, but the county plans on paving River Valley Road, and there's a short section that part of it is in Yorktown, 800 feet. And Yorktown has agreed to pay for the materials if we pave it. So we'll have a completed section. That's what that is for.
I make a motion, we approve the inner local agreement with Yorktown.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll move to ordinance for second reading. We have ordinance number 2021-008, creating a new fund for receipt of funding from the American Rescue Plan as adopted by Congress in 2021.
This was the ordinance that was, that is, to create the fund for the American Rescue Plan, money that the county's going to get this year and next year in the auditor's office. I think Steve indicated last time that the money's due by May 11.
Yes.
Be directly deposited into the account.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2021-008.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we have ordinance number 2021-010, been ordinance to amend the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance pertaining to 2451 West Fusen Road in Muncie, Indiana.
Would the Commissioners like to consolidate this with ordinance 2021-011?
Yes.
That's just what I was going to say.
Great minds think alike, Marta.
Yeah. Marta Moody, Executive Director for the Delaware-Muncie Metropolitan Plant Commission. These two cases involve approximately 138 acres but are located on the west side of Cowan Road, extending from Fusen Road south to State Road 67. And the request is for a change in zoning from the F farming zone to the IL Limited Industrial Zone. And the Plant Commission started the public hearing process at their meeting earlier this month and forwarded a favorable recommendation by a vote of five to four to the Commissioners for their final action. And there are people here this morning representing the applications in favor, and I'm assuming also against. So I will answer any questions you've got, and if none, I would step down and allow those people to speak.
That'll work. The people that signed up today, Ms. Lawson-Mutter, are you here to speak?
Yes, I am.
On this? Okay. You'd like to come up. You'll have three minutes to speak. And also, if she says the same thing that anybody else is, we're trying to keep it from being repetitive. So if you could go ahead, Mrs. Lawson-Mutter.
Good morning, Commissioners. I live in Parkshire Place addition, out next to the proposed site. I sent all of you an email, but I didn't know for sure if you got it or if you got it, if you read it, but I'm going to read it again and add to it. I would like for you guys to put yourself in my shoes, and then you would understand why our neighbors don't want the property rezoned. We're a nice neighborhood to live in, and we don't want another factory close to our neighborhood. There is a Shell building already across the road next to Magna that I understand that Delaware County built to sell for a factory. So I understand that that building has been there for five years or longer now, and nobody's bought it. So I understand that that would be a good location for them to want to put theirs. If the building's not big enough, there's plenty of room there for them to add on to it. Also, there's lots of other property around Delaware County that these factories can go. For instance, the Warner Gear site, that is a big piece of property out there. Bricks and things are laying on it, but that'd be another place to put the factory back up where Warren was there already. The building and the factory, whatever that is built out there, will knock our property values down, not to mention all the noise, the excess traffic, and all of the other fumes or whatever that comes from there. I asked you to reconsider your vote and vote for the neighborhood, as we are the residents who voted for you, counting on you to help our neighborhood out. Thanks very much.
Julie Borgman, are you here to speak on this? Okay, then. Tracy Lutton?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Tracy Lutton with the Muncie Delaware County Economic Development Alliance. I'm here to support the property owner's application to rezone and also the Plant Commission's favorable recommendation for you today. And I support this for a singular reason, to bring new opportunities for Delaware County residents, wealth-building opportunities through job creation and also future capital investment. I also support that it is a limited industrial classification being requested. The other three corners of this area are intense industrial or industrial park. This zoning would restrict any development or use unless explicitly listed in the Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance. It would not allow, for example, livestock, livestock production or anything that has outside operations. We do not have any sites in the industrial center greater than 100 acres currently. We have other smaller sites, and we certainly market them. Of course, we have the Shell building, and we market that as well. But this is a site that is above 100 acres. It has an exceptionally strong utility infrastructure present, especially in light of the new substation just constructed by AEP. This plan, or this site, has already been reviewed. It's in the Economic Development Plan from 2008, which was reviewed and approved by the Plant Commission as being in compliance with the Comprehensive Zoning Plan. And so, given that previous review and action, we have conducted extensive site study and due diligence on this property. We've earned a shovel-ready designation, but the only thing not completed is the zoning, the zoning change. So I want to be clear, the type of companies that we are seeking to attract are not what you often think of, the factories of 30 years ago, 50 years ago. These are high-tech, extremely clean, very automated, and they provide good job opportunities that come with training and scaling up opportunities for our workforce. So this site is an industrial setting. It's across the street from the industrial park. It has utilities, the transportation network, the visibility, everything that companies are seeking. And so, given that the site has already been reviewed and approved in the plan for this area, I ask you to approve this zoning request. Thank you.
Mr. Joe Davis?
Basically, I'm against rezoning this. I live at 2535 West Fusen Road, which is immediately to the west of this piece of property. I live on a pond, and I built my home in 1976, and we've been feeding wildlife, animals, birds, deer, everything that live in that small woods that's on the west side of this proposed property. I mean, it is a wildlife refuge, you could say. We feed birds. We've had, there was hawks in that woods, falcons. We have a couple of falcons that have nested in the woods. We have rabbits, squirrels, many varieties of wildlife, clay-winged waxwing birds, which I've only seen like two years. Beautiful, beautiful birds. It's, I worry about that wildlife. I worry about the water table. What will this do to the water table? I know that when you dug the ditch on the other side of Fusen Road, our pond water level dropped three feet, and it's never recovered. Now, what kind of water usage will this new plant use? What will it do to the quality of water and the depth of the water table? And there's many homes there. We've got South Wind Village, it's breezy, there's Parkshire Place, plus the homes right along Cowan Road that'll be just across the road from this factory. We have no idea what it's going to do. We have no idea how they're going to use that land. We don't know if they're going to rip out the woods and destroy the property. It's so nice in the morning to walk outside and look to the east and see the sunrise. It's a beautiful sight. I just can't imagine walking out there and seeing a factory. You've got across Fusen Road, there is an industrial park. It has never been a problem. You've got that new building sitting empty that I've been looking at, because as I pull on my driveway, there it is. There's many acres of grounds there. You've got the old Delco plant acreage, which I understand is dirty. Well, clean it up. That's what the industrial park is for. You build over there. You don't take fresh farmland and dirty it and destroy it. There's only so much of it left. You can't keep using that as an excuse. There's a rail spur over there by Exide and where Delco was. Everything they need is right there. Infrastructure, the power plant, yeah, that was very nice either. I've got new power poles that came in 75 feet from the fence line that I have to look at every day. And there used to be a little farmhouse at the end of the lane, and I lived there, and it's gone. My name tore all that out to build the substation. But I implore you to move against this. There are so many other places they could, they could build.
All right, sorry, you have three minutes left.
Thank you.
Mike Dunham?
I really don't have any more I can add. I think I sent all three of you, in fact, I know I did, and linked the email, which were my comments from the Planning Commission meeting. Stand by all that. We continue to hear that we need a larger potogram. Well, right in industrial park, there's 92 acres for sale. I can't imagine that eight acres makes that world that big of a difference. Right to the east of the Magnum Plant, there's 80 acres for sale. Both pieces of property are zoned industrial, ready to go. They're not infringing upon the farm ground that we're talking about today. So I just, again, would hope that you would do the right thing for the people that live in that area, that community. Another thing, and I think I mentioned that in my email, that's a gateway into Muncie and Delaware County, too. I think it would look a whole lot better the way it is now. We dress that up. We put in that meridian there in the middle of the road, and then to have a plant. And we don't know what's going to be there. We hear the assurances that it's going to be this or that. But in that light industry zoning, there are two food processing facilities that are allowed. We don't want that. And I'm sure that when Exide came in, all the insurances in the world were made about that, too. And guess what? It's killing people every day. You know, we talk about jobs. Well, we provided jobs for those people, but we probably provided a shorter lifespan for most of them, too, that worked there. In my humble opinion, Delaware County doesn't need a whole lot more jobs. They need more people willing to work. You go around, I talk to small business people all the time. All of them are begging for help. They can't get people to work. So I think we just need more people that want to work. Thank you.
Thank you. We have Nikki Jeters? Okay. That's all we have on these ordinances. Plus the Commissioner's pleasure.
You want to vote on both, or?
I'd vote on both.
I make a motion, we adopt ordinance 2021-010 and 2021-011.
Second.
Have a motion, a second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan.
Yes.
Mr. Henry.
Yes.
Mr. King.
Yes. Next, we'll move to ordinance number 2021-013, been an ordinance to amend the text of the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance regarding solar energy.
Good morning again. Marta Moody, Executive Director, Plant Commission. And this is a proposed text amendment to the Delaware County Comprehensive Zoning Ordinance that will provide development standards for solar farms to be located in the unincorporated area of Delaware County. And the Plant Commission heard this April 1 at their meeting, and they returned a favorable recommendation to you with unanimous approval, nine to zero. And the, I forwarded the ordinance as of April 1 to you, but then also I forwarded a copy of a listing of the revisions that had been done as a result of the Plant Commission's discussion, and that dealt with reducing the, one of the setbacks that was, had been 100 feet, reducing that to 50 feet. So that was incorporated into the ordinance by action of the Plant Commission. And also, at the Plant Commission, there was discussion about the buffering, landscaping, screening should also apply to dwellings that were across the road. So there was a provision that was inserted for that. And then there were also comments dealing with protection of existing drainage tiles. So I added a new general provision that is on that revision sheet that says installation of solar farm facilities must not interfere with existing drainage tiles unless mitigation measures are taken such as reconstruction and/or rerouting. I did have an email from one of the solar providers dealing with the drainage tile issue, and he was asking if it could read, "The solar project must maintain the drainage integrity of the area through repairs, rerouting tile, replacing tile, or installing additional drainage features." And I'm, to be honest, I'm not sure that, that the end result of that provision is any different from the one that I had. The bottom line is, protect existing drainage. If something is cut or obstructed, then that's going to come out in ponding or whatever, and at that point, then basically it would need to be addressed. So I'm not sure that one or the other is any, is any better. I think the bottom line is, the idea that you're protecting the existing drainage of the solar farm area, and the solar farm provider is responsible for maintaining that drainage. So after that meeting, there were some additional discussions, and that, on the revisions for this morning's meeting, the first one that I would suggest deals with just inserting a provision that's titled Economic Development Agreement. And it's very simple, and I realize that you could do that anyway, but I thought if it's in the ordinance, then that lets them know that that's a possibility. And so that would be one additional change to the ordinance. And then there was another suggestion from one of the Plant Commission members that we add the language on pesticide use that's in item number two, saying that it's not permitted on the site. However, it does not stop the application of pesticide use around the buildings and other spot treatment to maintain the integrity of the site. So, and under Section 3, buffers and landscaping, there was discussion at the Plant Commission, but no decision made dealing with this, the landscaping requirement. The original ordinance talked about planting three rows of trees offset, and as we discussed that, we felt that, we, meaning that was my staff, who is, has a Masters in Landscape Architecture, and Lauren Timmy, the Purdue Extension educator, who has background in natural resources and landscape architecture. So we talked about this and decided that for that 50-foot buffer area that used to say you have to have specifically three rows of trees, et cetera, we should change that. And it should be much more flexible to indicate that you need to plant enough vegetation to create a visual screen. And that provides flexibility for them to decide how they want to provide that screen, and rather than being very prescriptive about it. The item number four also is tied to that, where we're suggesting that we insert a phrase that, "The landscape plan prepared by a professional landscape architect." And those two work together, because you've got a professional landscape architect. They're going to determine what plants would be required to create that visual screening effect without us telling them exactly what they would need to plant. So we thought that was a better way to go. And one thing I also wanted to make clear, because I had an email about this as well, in that 50-foot area, we certainly do not expect that the entire 50 feet will need to be planted in trees and shrubs. That, that's where the landscape architect comes into play. You plant what, in the professional opinion of that landscape architect, will be necessary to create the screen. It's not expected that they would have to fill that entire 50-foot area. And then the last one is, deals with fencing. At the Plant Commission meeting, there had been a suggested change from one of the solar providers that the provision that dealt with having wildlife-friendly fencing so that small and medium-sized animals can move freely through the fence, the addition that the Plant Commission approved was that it would be for at least 10% of the fence lines. I made a mistake, because I thought, okay, that, you know, that's okay. There needs to be some clarity as to where that 10% occurs. You don't want it all to be in one quarter of the solar farm. Not that anybody would do that, but it's, I think what we need to do is add that where the 10% shall be evenly distributed along the fence line, and in particular, at identified wildlife corridors. If you don't do that, then you're not really carrying through with the whole idea of being wildlife-friendly. So those three, those five additional recommendations, I would highly recommend you incorporate into the ordinance. So I know there are some other people, obviously from your list, who are here to speak on this, so I will, unless you have any questions of me.
Not right now.
Okay.
Ms. Borgman?
Hi, I'm Julie Borgman. I'm a Delaware County resident of 35 years, as well as I'm also here representing Redtail Land Conservancy. And Redtail Land Conservancy also owns several properties here in Delaware County, as well as throughout east central Indiana. So first of all, I want to commend Marta and the Planning Commission. I think they've done a wonderful job drafting an ordinance that does a lot to help protect our land and enhance the the actual solar installations that can, that will hopefully develop here in Delaware County. The biggest thing that I want to speak about today are two things, and the first is to speak in support of the language in the ordinance as it is now. And I love visual aid, because a picture's worth at least 1,000 words. This is a picture of a solar installation that has native grasses and wildflowers planted underneath it. So hopefully you can see, not only does it add a lot of beautification to the solar farm and the solar installation, it also does so much to restore soil health. So when a solar installation takes place and the landowner signs a contract for 20 years, by using native grasses and native wildflowers, you're restoring the soil health, you're improving the ground where this installation is, reducing erosion. The panels operate much more efficiently. These plants, because they're native to the area, require much less water to exist, don't require the use of herbicides and weed killers and chemicals to be sprayed all over. So upfront, it may be more expensive than planning other seed mixes, but over the 20-year course, for the people who are actually maintaining the property, it's much, much less expensive. And for the landowner, if after 20- landowner, if after 20 years, I mean, who knows, I mean, 20 years ago, I don't think we were thinking about large solar farms. So, who knows 20 years from now what the technology is? For the landowner, when those solar panels come out, they have soil that's been rested for over 20 years. So, think right now of like the impetus for cover crops and things. That's basically what you're doing, is you're planting a native cover crop that in 20 years, if those solar panels come out, I've talked to several farmers, and they're like, Julie, we've been paid to rest our land. Why take government subsidies to rest our land when we can get paid to rest our land? And when this is done, we have soil that's been rested for over 20 years, and we're left with better soil than what we started with. So, it's a win-win for both the solar companies, because the panels operate much more efficiently, it costs much less to maintain the site, as well as the landowner and all of the neighbors, because I know some people aren't thrilled about these being, you know, next to them. You have a really beautiful installation that's going to happen there. The second thing I wanted to talk about is, some people have talked about the seed mixes and using naturalized versus native. And while a lot of you might not be ecologists or botany experts, it's really important to realize there's a big difference between naturalized and native. Native means that they exist here, they're going to do much better in this soil. Naturalized can be things like clover, for example. And if you've had a hayfield, or, you know, clover takes over.
Your three minutes are up, so if you could just wrap it up, please?
I sure will. And the last thing I just wanted to mention is, in the ordinance, it talks about removing up to an acre of forest. This is a map of Delaware County. The green areas are forest, about 200,000 acres, and we have like 1.8 million acres of open space. So, I would encourage you not to take out forests, because when the solar installation is done, you can't replant a forest, but you can have a really restored farm field for agriculture again. So, I would encourage you to take out the ability to remove up to an acre of woods, because we've got precious little woods left in Delaware County.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
Nikki?
Hi there. My name is Nikki Jeffers. I work for a renewable energy company called EDP Renewables. We're actually working on signing land in Delaware County right now for solar. And one thing I do want to address that was brought up in regards to taking out wood at acres, just because it's in the ordinance doesn't necessarily mean we'll do it. So, I can say from our company, we don't want to remove any trees, because we know that the Indiana native bat and other bats are endangered, and, you know, we need to protect them. But a couple of things that I wanted to talk about was, first of all, thank you. This is fantastic. We absolutely love that Delaware County is being proactive in this, and thank you very much to Marta for all of her help. A couple items that I just kind of wanted to clarify and/or bring question, and maybe Marta, you can help me with this. The first one is in regards to the maintenance plan for landscape requirements. It talks about native grasses and perennials shall be used to stabilize the site during the duration of the facility's use. Whereas later on, it talks about ground cover in that mix of grasses and wildlife, and wildflowers, ideally to native to the region. So, is that kind of counteracting itself? More of a question to Marta, actually. I guess, I'm asking for clarification, if in fact, it's kind of saying the same thing, but then one is allowing, saying we need native, and the other one is saying that we don't need native, that it's okay?
Oh, I can address that.
Address that afterwards.
Okay, okay, all right. Other than that, no, that's really all that I have. Everybody has been fantastic to work with, and we really appreciate it.
All right, thank you. Marta, you want to address that?
The, she's right. There is a little bit of confusion between those provisions. The, to clarify, the intent is to definitely require native plants wherever plantings are required. The intent is to have them be native. And the ground cover provision that she mentioned, if you took out ideally, then it would just read native to the region. So, take out ideally, I would suggest, and then we've got it covered.
We don't have anyone else to speak on this. It's a pleasure of the commission.
If I could, Commissioner, before, Marta, are those changes that you mentioned in your opening comments, are those incorporated in what the commissioners have in front of them? Or were they part of the comments from the Plan Commission that carried over that are not in this document?
They are not. The, in that revision page that I sent you, the items at the top have been incorporated. But the items 1, 2, 5 at the bottom have not been incorporated. So, I would suggest that the, any, if you're leaning this way, any action would be to approve the ordinance with the additional amendments laid out in items 1 through 5, plus removing the phrase or the word ideally from the ground cover section.
I might also suggest that to get a clean copy for the commissioners to take a look at, is you table this, because this is second reading prior to adoption. You could table this, we could put together the ordinance with the changes, so that you have a clean copy that can be followed.
Right. And I will say that luckily, the state legislatures moved to take the regulation of renewable energy out of the hands of locals and place it in, at the state level, died. So, we don't have the same urgency, probably, that might have occurred. And if you would want to table it, that's not a problem. I can certainly incorporate, if the idea is that, like, if your action could be to table this, to allow for all of these suggested amendments to be incorporated into the ordinance, then I can go ahead and do that and bring back a clean copy to you of the final.
I agree with John. I'd rather have everything in there.
Yeah. I move we table ordinance 2021-013.
Yep. Someone put their hand up.
I was just wanting to, since Marta clarified, I was wondering if I could speak again?
I don't know. It's not up to me.
You had your time when you was up here. We're just going to go ahead and move on.
I'll second the motion to table.
Have a motion of second to table it. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Next, we'll move to ordinances for first reading, ordinance number 2021-012, an ordinance creating a new fund for grant-funded overtime for the Delaware County Emergency Medical Services Department. This is probably one that we'd want to suspend the rules for also, so we can go ahead and get this created.
I would please ask that you would suspend the rules for this, because we're supposed to be getting the money anytime now.
It's a pleasure of the commission.
I make a motion we introduce ordinance number 2021-012.
Second.
Have a motion of second for introduction. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I make a motion we suspend the rules.
Second.
Have a motion and a second for suspension of the rules. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
I make a motion we adopt ordinance number 2021-012.
Second.
Have a motion of second for adoption. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thanks for, you guys applying for that, and, appreciate it.
It's going to be a big help. Thank you.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
We have no resolutions for approval, so we'll move to department heads and elected officials. Do we have any department heads or elected officials wanting to speak? Jeff?
Morning. Jeff Brandon, Inspector Weights and Measures. We have two 5-gallon brewers and four 50-pound test weights that have been in a storage room for quite a few years. And I'd like the approval of the commissioners to donate those to the state, to see if they can be certified. We're not even sure if they can because of their age. But if they could, there's some smaller counties around the state that don't have the funding to get any equipment, and they could give those to them.
If we're not, if we're not using them, yeah, I'll second it.
Have a motion of second to donate these from Weights and Measures. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anybody else? Mr. Singleton?
Morning.
Morning.
Paul Singleton, Director of Delaware County 911. I've got two things to bring up this morning. As you know, we have upgraded our 911 telephone system, and I've been able to get rid of some of the lines that were associated with the other telephone system, and we've moved over to fiber. And then, we've also decommissioned some microwave equipment. So, we have a fairly large savings that we have done because of that. One last piece of this project that I need to finish up is, our nice recorder that, our logger that does radio and telephone, now records off of, it's digital and audio, or digital and analog. And we need to move that all over to analog. And the quote for doing that through Motorola is $3,692.31. I have the money in my budget to do that. I'm just bringing that to you, and I also bring that to you up at the finance meeting, let them know I have that money to do that. The other thing is, we've been having issues with our heating and cooling again. That system's 20 years old. They, Resoltech did some work this past week of moving some thermostats, since that was a retrofit building, the thermostats weren't in the rooms where they were controlling the temperature, so they moved some thermostats around. Once they got done, they found a leak in one of the big condensers. Every time they refill it with the Freon, it's $600. That's bad enough, but it's also the Freon that's not real eco-friendly. And I believe last year, they put at least $7,000. You all spent at least $7,000 keeping that up just last year. So, Ron Crouch from Resoltech has talked to myself and Charlie Walker, and they believe it's time that we stop putting money into the old system. So, I will get this quote to you. It's for $22,700 to replace a, the 20-ton unit, and everything that is associated with it, demo and install, start to finish. So, I will get this to you. I just wanted to make you aware of, one issue was fixed, and then they found another. And it seems like every year, we have something, either a compressor goes out on that system, or we have a major leak or something, and it's mainly due to that system being 20 years old. We have a new boiler that commissioners put in, I believe, what, a year and a half ago, Charlie? So, if we're able to get this done this year, that'll give us a system that I'm hoping, you know, we have another 20-year system.
Could you get a couple more quotes for us, please?
Yes.
You know, so when we have the 911 board meetings, can you bring this stuff up in those also?
I will do that.
That way, everybody knows what's going on, what
Yes.
needs to be done with that facility?
Yes. So, thank you, commissioners.
Thank you.
Have any other elected official or department head? If not, we'll move to payment of claims in the amount of $2,458,774.54.
Second.
Have a motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. John, do you have anything?
No, there are no comments. There's also.
Just real quick. I want to thank everybody for the messages and the flowers and the support I got last week. And I just, I just want to tell everybody thanks.
We don't have anything else. I entertain a motion of recess.
So moved.
Second.
Motion of second. Steve, can you call the roll, please?
Mr. Henry?
Yes.
Ms. Reagan?
Yes.
Mr. King?
Yes. Moving to recess.